Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the April 11th Planning Commission Meeting and ask, uh, let's see where we at here, sorry about that. Ask for Commissioner Opal to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand one nation under God. Thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner Opal. Next, on the agenda is roll call.
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the approval of minutes, does anybody have any comments or a motion?
Move that we approve the minutes?
Great.
Second.
Alright, great, that's a first and a second, please vote. Moves us on to public comments, I believe, don't believe we have any public comments tonight, other than items that are already listed on our agenda, okay. So if you submitted a speaker card, we will call you up on the agenda item as soon as it gets going here. Which moves us to our consent calendar, we have no consent items, no public hearings, moves us on to item E, which is our old business, and the workshop and introduction of our draft short-term rental program. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Tonight's item is to introduce the Planning Commission to the short-term rental program that has been developed with community input over the past year and a half. The Planning Commission Subcommittee has worked hard along with staff on developing this, so tonight's purpose is to present the draft program, respond to any questions the Planning Commission might have, listen to the public and comments we have, and then we'll be discussing next steps. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff Rossler, the Community Development Manager, and then following his presentation, John Champa will provide a presentation.
Good evening Chair Nelson and Planning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Over the course of the discussion concerning the short-term rental program in Dana Point, there's been numerous public comments made concerning illegal short-term rentals, or short-term rentals operating and/or advertising without a city permit. In the past six years, there's been 544 code cases for illegal STRs with over 250 citations issued by the Code Enforcement Division. And these were all to owners who have decided to operate within the city limits without a permit. These homes and advertisements have been brought into code compliance by the removal of the advertisements or for the rental of the property for a minimum of 30 days. City staff currently uses a third-party system that searches for illegal advertisements, and this system is run by Granicus and is called Host Compliance. Several members of the public have cited another third-party system referred to as AirDNA. These third-party platforms do what they call scrubbing, or scraping the internet, to collect STR advertisement data, and then presumably have an analyst review the data for accuracy. City staff recently obtained a membership to AirDNA to validate the accuracy of the data that is being presented this evening. The two biggest concluding facts concerning the analysis were: AirDNA is a platform used for investors to explore a market so they can purchase a home. It is not used for municipalities attempting to locate illegally advertised STRs. AirDNA data is just not very good, and it's often incorrect or conflicting. So let's take a look at this. When you log into AirDNA, you see a dashboard, and this dashboard gives you all the homes that are in Dana Point that are listed on only two websites, Airbnb and VRBO. It says up there in the upper-left corner that there's 177 active rentals on the dashboard landing page, but no exact addresses are given for any of the data, and the dating listings aren't exportable, or you can't get a spreadsheet of the information as you can with Granicus or another system that the city uses. So city staff took the opportunity to click on each one of those purple or blue dots, and they found the STR listing, and they analyzed the STR listing, they put them in a spreadsheet, and looked at how many nights were available, was it a duplicate listing, is it an illegal listing, made sure they documented the URL number so that we weren't looking at the same listings, and found all the listings on Airbnb or VRBO depending on the platform. In total, they analyzed over 234 listings that were presented on this homepage or landing page of AirDNA. You can see that AirDNA here, this is our first conflicting information, says that there's 177 active rentals. Well, we looked at 234 listings, so there's a difference between listing a property as an advertisement, and actually the property being a specific property rented to the public. Now, 29 listings that we found were duplicate listings, so that would tell me there's 205 unique properties in town. But it's hard to tell, if you look down here on their landing page, it says that Airbnb says 36% of their listings are on that platform, 32% are on VRBO, and 32% are listed on both. So once again, conflicting information, lots of numbers, let's look at these a little bit closer by looking at what the listings say. Here's a pie chart of those 234 listings. You can see that one was a motorhome, two of them were outside of Dana Point, six of them, excuse me, five of them were removed listings, six of them were illegally advertised, 78% of them were STRs that were permitted, and 142 were 30-plus nights, or 61%. So here you have a motorhome, and you can call up Nicole here, and she will bring that motorhome down to Doheny for you. Doesn't tell you where the motorhome resides overnight, or, you know, what city it usually is in, but you can rent it here in Dana Point if you have a campsite at Doheny presumably. There were two that are outside the city of Dana Point. This one here was in Laguna Nigal, located up on the hills. And this one here is a beautiful picture of Oceanside Pier, but you can see it was located here on PCH in Dana Point. There was a handful that we got this error message when we logged on to them, and it says "Service Request Authorization Error, you do not have permission to access this resource." So we contacted Airbnb to see what this was all about, and they confirmed that these listings have been removed from their site, we just had captured an old URL and were logging into that URL. And so here, we did find that there were six properties on the site that were illegally advertised without proper valid permits, or with the wrong amount of days. The one on the right there is really interesting, we have views of LA Harbor to Snowcap Mountains. They had two pictures on the Airbnb listing, both pictures were inside the house, and so you can see that this would be difficult for a code enforcement officer or for an analyst to locate where this is actually occurring. How are we supposed to do enforcement on this house, based that we have no information where it is, who's listing it, the outside of the property? And so Granicus will have their analysts look and do all sorts of data research to figure out where this property is. If on their site it shows up as, hey, we just can't figure it out, it'll show up on yellow on their site, and all six of these listings were listed on our other two platforms that we use, and all six of them had, hey, we're not quite sure where they are. They've also been given over to our code officer who handles STRs, and he's really familiar with the town and has better luck, and he's gone out and started doing code enforcement cases on these six sites. Furthermore, we've contacted Airbnb, who's been working with us recently, and we've asked them to remove sites from their platform, which they've agreed to do. 78 of these homes had valid STR permits. Without clicking on each site and going into the advertisement, it was hard to tell if they had an STR permit or not. This one right here, this modern ocean view four-bedroom house conveniently located their permit number right there on the description, and so that was really easy to find. Bear in mind that we did ask them all to put it on their photographs, and that's something that code enforcement is following up with as well. And 61% of the homes were compliant with their listings by having them listed for 30-plus nights. If you go on their dashboard here, you can look on the left, and on their dashboard on rental settings, it says that 50% of them are actually 30-plus nights. Well, we did our own data analysis of their work and showed that it was actually closer to 61%, excuse me. When you go on these listings, it's very clear they're 30 nights, you go to the select dates, you plug in the date you want to show up, and you cannot plug in your second date unless it's over 30 nights. So as far as we're concerned, it's not possible to rent these homes for less than 30 nights. You'll often hear, you'll often hear that, you know, in the listings and the comments, that they'll say, hey, this was a great week's stay, or this was a great two-week's stay, and somebody has found a loophole on how to contact the owner and rent the property for less than 30 nights, and we've heard this complaint quite a bit. Here's a case study that we did last summer, we had that complaint from an HOA, and we tried to figure out, hey, are these two units really being rented for less than 30 nights? We went out there a lot, we knocked on doors, we watched cars, we watched people come and go, and to see if we could determine if they were there for a shorter period than they were supposed to be. From there, code enforcement actually tried to rent the property, and they contacted the owner of the property through Airbnb, said, hey, great, I understand it's only 30 days, but let me have it for seven. And obviously, they weren't using somebody@danaPoint.org, I believe it was Ohio Soccer Mom that was trying to rent these homes from this owner. And the owner got back to them and said, unfortunately, I'm only allowed to rent for 30-plus days, this is both by HOA and city code, I cannot rent it to you. So the cases were closed, but additional research and bookings can and should be done in the future so that we make sure this problem is not occurring. This is a dashboard that we see with Host Compliance, which is the third-party vendor we're currently using. They show 693 total listings, which is different from the 177 or 234 that we saw through AirDNA. You can see that 151 of those identified properties, oh, so they also differentiate between total listings and properties, and red is non-compliant, yellow is we haven't identified the address, and green is compliant in their system. And you can see all the different platforms that they scrub, it's not just Airbnb and VRBO. This summer, we'll be shifting to another third-party data source, and this one shows that they have 100, or, excuse me, 1,522 listings and 252 properties. So you can see that they're scrubbing even more websites, making sure that we're collecting as much data as we possibly can. Thank you for the opportunity to present. If there's anyone in the public concerned about the analysis that was done, or anybody who would like to further go over the analysis with me, I'm happy to meet you at City Hall, happy to have a phone contact conversation with you over the phone, but you can reach out to me, my email address is presented on the screen. Thank you, that's all I have.
Great, thanks, and we'll hold questions until the whole presentation's done. Great, thanks.
Good evening Chair Nelson, Planning Commissioners, John Champa, I'm gonna be presenting the Short-Term Rental Public Workshop presentation. So just to give you a little background of my presentation, it'll be covering just a little background efforts as a result of guidance from the City Council, as well as the Short-Term Rental Subcommittee efforts, reviewing some data associated with short-term rentals, and then providing a summary of the draft short-term rental program. So before I jump into the presentation, just wanted to give a little bit of background on the recent efforts with short-term rentals, and so in the near future, back in 2020, the Planning Commission did establish a Short-Term Rental Subcommittee with Chair Donor, or Chair Nelson and now Vice Chair Donor, to provide guidance on the establishment of a short-term rental program, as well as conducting extensive public outreach in the effort. These efforts resulted in an update to the city's business regulations for short-term rentals, which included new and enhanced regulations which were approved in June of 2021. Subcommittee's efforts, or more recent efforts, do now include the presentation this evening of the draft short-term rental program before you. So just to dive into a little bit more depth in terms of the Short-Term Rental Subcommittee public outreach efforts, this has included articles to the local paper, social media posts, establishment of an interested parties list, which is now approaching 600, as well as a citywide flyer. The Planning Commission has been briefed every meeting with the updates and progress of the Short-Term Rental Subcommittee for the Planning Commissioners, as well as to provide information to the public. Stakeholder meetings have been conducted with various groups in the community, including permit holders, management companies of short-term rentals, neighbors and community members that live adjacent or near short-term rentals, as well as community groups. Informational flyers have been provided to all properties within the city, commercial and residential, as well as all occupants, to ensure all interested parties have been identified, and that was conducted towards the beginning of the public, or, I'm sorry, the Short-Term Rental Program efforts. In addition to that, the city's webpage has been updated to provide additional information related to short-term rentals, and the approach of reaching out to residents, operators, and neighbors to ensure that all informed of their appropriate information and rights. And the city has also established a short-term rental map, as well as contact information if you're unaware of where short-term rental exists, but you know it's near you, you can click on the map and be able to identify that and make contact with the operator if there is an issue. And additional efforts include researching of all of the short-term rental regulations from other municipalities inside and outside of the coastal zone, to identify appropriate regulations and best management practices that could be incorporated into this short-term rental program. And the final two efforts have included the amendment to the Short-Term Rental Business Regulations, which were approved by the City Council, as well as the draft Short-Term Rental Program that's before you today. As I stated, the business regulations for short-term rentals were just recently updated, or recently in June 1st of 2021. These included enhanced regulations and best management practices to respond to issues that have been identified throughout the community related to response times, noise, notification of adjacent properties, as well as increased penalties to violators. With this, I'm gonna turn it over to the city attorney to provide a little background on some recent case law associated with short-term rentals.
Good evening. So there are two recent cases on the issue of short-term rentals that I wanted to highlight for you tonight. Both of these cases were mentioned in the staff report, but I thought it would be helpful if we fleshed them out in a little additional detail. The first case is Crackey versus City of Santa Barbara. That decision was handed down in 2021. The second case is Keene versus City of Manhattan Beach, which came out last week. Both cases involved cities with LCPs that were silent on the issue of short-term rentals. In Crackey, the City of Santa Barbara allegedly at one point took the position that short-term rentals were allowed and encouraged in the city, and then they changed their position and said that they were not allowed by the city's LCP. City of Manhattan Beach was slightly different, that case involved a city who took the position all along that short-term rentals were not permitted by its LCP. In both cases, the court held that if you have not processed a CDP or an LCP that is specific to short-term rentals, that short-term rentals are effectively allowed as a residential use in all residential zones throughout the city. Applying those cases here, we have some problematic holdings frankly. If we were challenged by somebody at this point in time, we might be able to argue that those cases don't apply, based on different facts, et cetera, but without a CDP that's been approved by the Coastal Commission, such as the one that we're discussing tonight, we are leaving ourselves open to the argument that like Santa Barbara and like Manhattan Beach, short-term rentals are residential use that is allowed in all residential zones throughout the city. So again, I want to highlight that the CDP process that we're discussing is really to put ourselves in a better position to include regulations that the community has been advocating, that the Planning Commission has been discussing, so we're not left in a position like Santa Barbara and like Manhattan Beach.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. With that, I'll continue on to a brief summary of some short-term rental data for the city. So just to give a sense, in terms of the information and data that was looking, that was collected as part of this effort, have included two community-wide surveys, city council policy direction related to short-term rentals. City has been in constant and continual discussions with the Coastal Commission in providing, or obtaining guidance on the city's efforts related to short-term rentals, evaluating code enforcement data, and conducting stakeholder and community outreach efforts. So here we have a visual representation of the locations of all the short-term rentals within the city. As you can see here in yellow, we have short-term rentals located within single-family residential zones. In orange is the multifamily residential zones, and then in the dark brown is the mixed-use zones. To further dive into the spatial distribution of the short-term rentals, here we have a distribution based on the voting districts throughout the city. So in District 1, we have 30 short-term rentals, District 2, we have four, District 3, we have one, District 4, we have 45, and then for District 5, we have split those into two, one, or the first being Capo Beach, which has 19, and then the Beach Road Community, which has 32. Some additional analysis of this data is that we have 94 that are within the multifamily residential zones, which is the orange, and then 37 within the single-family residential zones, the yellow. The split between the two in terms of in and out of the coastal zone is relatively close, with 72 within the coastal zone and 59 outside the coastal zone. And then additionally, looking at the different types of short-term rentals, which I'll provide the definition shortly, we have 122 that are of your traditional non-primary short-term rental, three that are primary, and six that are of a homestay type. So short-term rental statistics based on property ownership, we have 131 total short-term rental permits active, 14 of those are owned, or 14 of those owners have two permits, and then one owner has three and one owner has four. So we have 96, or 73% that are, that only have one permit. The distribution of the ownership types, in terms of where are these people located, where do they live, 47 are located within the city, 66 are within California, and then 18 are located out of state. So here, I'll give you a brief summary of the short-term rental program. So the program and the framework associated with it were developed based on components of the outreach effort process, which is a result of the public input, research of the other short-term rental municipalities, and data gathered through the process. The foundation of the short-term rental program is built off of the Short-Term Rental Business Regulations, which were just recently adopted by the City Council. So here, as part of this process, we've identified three different types of short-term rentals, first being homestay, which is where the property owner resides in the unit and rents one of the rooms of the house or unit. Another type is where it's a multifamily property, so maybe it's a duplex or triplex, and they may rent out one of the units while residing in the other unit. Then we have primary residence where the owner, this is their primary residence, when they live there, it's not being rented, but then when they are away, traveling, or elsewhere on business, they would be able to rent it. And then last is your more traditional short, type of short-term rental, which is identified as the non-primary short-term rental, and so the owner does not reside in the residence, and it is rented to visitors. So here we have the basic framework and outline of the proposed or draft short-term rental program, where it identifies the different types of short-term rentals that I just stated. We also specify the identification of the different zones where it would be allowed, which is single-family and multifamily. The establishment of a cap for permits, which would be 185, this is of the non-primary types, your traditional, but no cap for primary and homestay short-term rentals. This cap was identified based on the maximum number of short-term rentals that were permitted in the city prior to, or up to 2016. Then the identification of multifamily apartments with one allowed per building, and no limit for condominiums. Permit transfers would only be allowed if the property was inherited, and then the permits would be limited to one per owner. If a permit cap is met at 185 for the non-primary short-term rentals, then a waitlist would be established for the issuance of new non-primary short-term rentals. Then this program would also prohibit the establishment of short-term rentals, or the permitting of short-term rentals in accessory dwelling units, or single-family residential duplexes, also known as SB9, and affordable housing units. Some specific operator regulations that have been identified for homestays is that the owner must reside in the unit from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, as well as for primary residences, that they be rented for a maximum of 60 days annually. So with that, the next steps that have been identified for the program is to obtain feedback from the public, as well as the Planning Commission this evening, and then tentatively scheduled, the Planning Commission to consider the conditional, or the coastal development permit for the short-term rental program on May 9th. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff's available for any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. So do we, I think we'd probably want to start with questions from the commission for Mr. Rossler, Mr. Champa, or the city attorney person, that we can take public comments and then provide some feedback? Anybody wanna? Questions for staff? Any one of our staff members?
No questions, and I think that comments would be provided after.
Okay, perfect. Yep.
Are we gonna walk through the Coastal Commission letter, the staff letter that they submitted, or? I've just got some questions on it, like the fee increase, the, let me just go through my notes, the, that's my, the affordable housing versus STR, the, how does that impact all of this? The growth cap, are we gonna base it off population or household? The 20-person cap that they outlined, do these have to be ADA compliant? And my last question was the penalties.
So staff, staff and the Subcommittee discussed the letter and the recommendations and the recommendations associated with the letter, and incorporated in what staff and the subcommittee felt like were appropriate at this time to incorporate. While some of these items are things that they may need just some additional information that would be included in the staff report for the coastal development permit, short-term rental program, however, others, you know, have been inserted in to the program as recommend, in the, their recommendations that were supported by the subcommittee. So not all of these have to be included in the program. Some just need to be bolstered in a, either a resolution or in the staff report. But we can go through any of those particular details if, that you request.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they were being addressed and that the public understands that they're being addressed as well.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. I just have a couple of clarifications, and it may just be discussion or later on. But on permit transfers, it talks about subject to city approval. It's just, to me, very vague. It doesn't really give any criteria as to what's it's subject to.
I think we wanted to leave it somewhat vague because there are unique circumstances that, that could come about. Your typical scenario is that, you know, someone passes away and this new individual is identified as, in, in the trust that would be inheriting the property. So we would want to look at that. Now, if this person that was inheriting the property, and maybe they were a bad operator, had lost their short-term rental permit, that may not, that may be something in that scenario that we would want to look into a little bit closer. But just to give a little bit of latitude for, for some level of discretion.
All right, thank you. On the application for waitlist, it talks about they have to provide an application annually and that the waitlist fee shall be the same for the STR permit fee. So are they going to be charged annually to be on the waitlist, or is it a one-time? Because I couldn't understand that from here.
Thank you for that question, yes. So the thought is, is that the, the, the waitlist fee would be essentially the, the first year once issued. So if you paid your fee, let's say next year it opens up and you, you're on the waitlist, then there would be no fee associated with it because that's already been paid.
Okay, it just wasn't clear when I read it. It's like you have to pay every year, and it didn't sound right. And then my last question kind of ties into something that was brought up previously about ADA. So it talks about the short-term rental must pass an initial inspection by the city prior to permit issuance. So is that, you know, with ADA compliance, with, you know, what, what is kind of that criteria of that inspection?
So the, the initial inspection, which is, this verbiage is taken from the city's municipal code for short-term rentals, business regulations, is basically a walkthrough inspection, I believe by our code enforcement officer, yes. And so they would be looking at it just to ensure that their, everything is generally up to code and looks copacetic, so ensuring that there haven't been some modifications that look unsafe, ensuring that everything in the application and city's records are, are accurate for, for general safety purposes. So there would be no inspection for compliance of ADA or anything like that. However, yeah, the city would not be requiring or reviewing that at that time.
All right, thank you very much.
Vice Chair Dunn, do you have any questions? Nope, okay, great. And let's go ahead and move on to the public comment portion of this. Anyone that is wishing to address the Planning Commission on this item tonight, we're going to ask that you fill out a speaker card if you already haven't, and give it to the Planning Commission Secretary. We're going to ask that you keep your comments to 3 minutes per person so that we can make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard tonight and appreciate everybody's patience. And let's bring up Barbara Wilson.
Good evening, I'm Barbara Wilson, a Dana Point resident. The short-term rental program that you're proposing is going to be at a severe cost to residential neighborhoods and the housing stock for potential renters. It is basically a reinstatement of the ordinance proposed, or opposed by residents in the referendum of 2016. In past workshops, you have heard all the nuisances that neighbors of STRs must endure. It seems that you have ignored Laguna Beach's program that limits this exposure. They have disallowed further expansion, excuse me, into residential neighborhoods. They have promoted commercial and mixed-use areas, as well as homestays for appropriate sites for STRs. Laguna's overnight STR occupants shall be a maximum of 2 persons per bedroom. Additional daytime guests are allowed between 7:00 and 10:00, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and cannot exceed 2 times the overnight count of the maximum daytime guests, not to exceed 24 homes, 5 bedrooms and larger. Their parking issues are also addressed, requiring off-street parking spaces for guests, and no vehicles for overnight or daytime occupants shall be parked on a street serving residential homes. All of these policies were approved by the Coastal Commission. The program our city has outlined does not spell out who gets the permits for how long, whether there can be a lottery, how many nights a year can they be rented. Penalties for bad actors are not clearly defined. The 25-year-old age minimum may be unenforceable. I don't know if you've really checked with these sites, Airbnb and VRBO. When I called them, it sounded as though that that would be age discrimination, and you might have problems enforcing that. I would check on that. With 42% of our residential units in homeowners association, there's an unfair burden on homes not in homeowners associations that will be inundated with STRs. The city has an obligation to preserve housing stock for the potential renters who provide valuable services for our residents. In an Orange County Register article last year ranking OC cities for providing additional housing for residents across age affordability, Dana Point had a D-rating. Policies like apartment projects such as Rain Tree could be incentivized to set aside 25% of their inventory for low-cost tenants. That would be an example of how to enrich our housing storage. We need to promote policies that will increase housing opportunities for our lower and middle-class residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabrina Mist, or Must, I'm sorry, I don't. Must, great, thank you.
Hi, I have owned a property in Dana Point for the past 6 months. I part-time live at a property that I short-term rent down in Encinitas. My neighbors love it because I have had terrible long-term tenants that threw parties all night long. I could not kick them out. I had to wait till their lease ended. My rental at both places, though Dana Point is obviously a month plus. I've had people there for 2 months, an older woman staying there, quiet as can be. Another 2 gentlemen that are working in the area on contract for a month and a half. In Encinitas, I rent my house mostly as just a 1-bedroom, because I have a bedroom there. It's a young couple for 2 nights. It's a gentleman in town not wanting to have a hotel. He has food allergies and wants a kitchen. My neighbors never know they're there. I have great relationships with my neighbors. It allows me to have eyes on the property, to maintain a relationship with the front unit tenants. Finally got great tenants in the front unit long-term. Have a relationship with my neighbors, never had an issue at all. If I do have an issue, which I did, I had a, someone that was supposed to be 2 women and 2 little kids show up with like 40 people with a petting zoo in my backyard. I was able to immediately cancel that reservation. Had it been a long-term tenant, I would have been able to do almost nothing. I can't evict them, I have to, it's a very difficult landlord-tenant relationship. I think the, the problem a lot of times with this discussion is people that are not in the short-term rental business do not understand, I don't think, from my understanding. There's a very, very big difference between me renting a 1-bedroom home to a huge mansion for a bachelor party. I am looking for the quiet, respectful, I, I bet so heavily because I care about the property. In Dana Point, I would love to be able to spend half my time there, have eyes on the property, maintain it better, have a relationship with the downstairs tenant. I'm not looking for the partier. I'm looking for the people that, I, I end up building a relationship with the guy who comes in town, you know, once a month for 4 nights, needs a place to stay instead of, you know, going to a Best Western. I would, I knew buying the property that it was, that I don't have a permit, right? I knew that it was going to be a month-long. It's a little bit more stressful for me, like, okay, I need to find a month-long person, 2-month-long, 3- I kind of end up getting lucky with just people, you know, in town or renovating homes or whatever. But I would really, really encourage people to understand there's a very big difference, and I would love for, you know, the, the separation of 1-bedroom home versus a 8-bedroom home. And it has helped me tremendously to afford mortgages that are just wildly expensive. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Carla Moore.
Hello, my name's Carla Moore. I own Sunset Vacation Rentals, which is, I'm a small business owner. I, I reside in Irvine. All of my rentals are in Dana Point and Laguna Beach, but I have 9 permits currently that have been grandfathered in. So I've been managing these properties for about 10 years, and we've had 0 complaints. It's been a wonderful program. I do want to thank the subcommittee for the work they've done in trying to provide an expanded program that meets everyone's needs. I'm going to make just a few comments. I definitely support the program. I think I have a few adjustments I'd like to suggest to the non-primary permits. I think 185 is a little bit low. It's about 50, 50-permit expansion from what we have right now. It may not be enough to satisfy the Coastal Commission, but it's a start. So, I mean, maybe it's, can be flexible and changed later on if the program is going well. I think transferring only inheritance is a bit restrictive. I am definitely in favor of transferring with a sale if the property is in good standing. Because I feel if, certainly as an operator and a manager, if I'm going to manage the property and it transfers to another investor and I still manage it, that means it's going to be run the same way it's been run with no complaints. If it's not in good standing, then, mm, nope, out of there. 1 permit per person, I think, is also a bit restrictive. I don't see why a good investor can't own 2 or 3. I mean, I don't recommend 10 or 20, but a couple, I don't think is going to turn the community into investor-oriented. That's pretty much it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Jim Shad.
Good evening. I've been out of the loop on the short-term rentals, but I saw the meeting, so I thought I'd come over. The last interaction I had was with a Zoom call, maybe about a year ago. And I was struck by the number of people on that Zoom call that were owner-on-site. They resided on-site, and they had great concern for their properties and their neighbors. I'm obviously in favor of this. I don't have any short-term rentals. I've heard the complaints about the housing stock shortage, but the permit cap, I think, would cover that. The nuisances, absolutely anybody, nobody should have to put up with bad short-term rental people. And I think in the past, that's been due to lack of enforcement. And so I think that that's probably being handled. And also with COVID, a lot of people don't want to stay in hotels. They want to stay a little bit separated from people. So I think that's another reason we need to do this. What else did I have here? That's, that's, from the Zoom call, I realized some people rely on this for income, otherwise they can't stay in their houses. And I'm just glad to see that this is moving forward, and, and I'm going to read it a little bit more when I get home and submit any ideas that I have on that. And other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Buck Hill.
Hi, as you all know, I kind of led the last nixing of this plan when you approved it, and we had 4,000 signatures of residents who said they don't want short-term rentals in their neighborhood, that it really degrades the quality of life. And this proposal, to me, is the most wildly generous to have more short-term rentals of any city I've seen. I, I can't believe it, this primary, short-term rental one. You can't even know how many days the thing is rented today. It's kind of a guess, so I don't think you're collecting anything like 100% of the TOT, you should be. How are you going to know whether they're living elsewhere temporarily or permanently? And the homestay, short-term rentals, what it says is in any home in the, in the city, you can have a B&amp;B operate. To me, that's just as big a nuisance as a, as a short-term rental. Maybe more if they have 1 for each bedroom in the house. So this just seems extreme, and I think the residents of Dana Point are going to go crazy with it. So get ready.
Matthew, I think it's Matthew Agron.
My client, Roger Malcolm, is a Capistrano Beach resident and has personally endured the negative effects of short-term rentals. He lived next door to an STR. It took way too long for the city to issue fines to effectively deter the socially undesirable behavior next door. Socially undesirable is a nice way to put it, as his family endured raging parties that began at midnight and continued until daylight. He endured illegal, intervening drug use and discarded needles into his yard where his young children played. What is needed from the city is the most restrictive, legally permissible restrictions on short-term rentals, and a city that is not fearful of litigation to protect its residents, its owners, and long-term renters. While stiff fines are needed, stiff fines are reactive. The changes needed most are proactive. Proactive measures the city is able to enforce. Measures that regulate STRs to the maximum extent possible to preserve the quality of life. With the Coastal Commission claiming that the cap on short-term rentals must grow with the city's growing population, infrastructure, and visitor-serving uses, the 185 permits proposed is far too many. The city should reduce the cap by at least half, given that it's bound to grow in the future, and it will be very difficult to enact any more restrictions on short-term rentals in the future. No new permit should be issued until the number of short-term rentals fall below the permitted cap. Any cap on the number of short-term rentals should apply to all short-term rentals, including primary and homestay STRs, as there is no known practical means to enforce the distinctions, especially for primary owner STRs. It's ripe for abuse. Requiring the homestay STRs to be home between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, what are you going to go and knock on their door at 11:00 PM? Wake them up to make sure they're there? The maximum stay for all STRs should be limited to 30 days per year. A 60-day limit as proposed for the primary-owned STRs is basically no limit at all, as it would allow the rentals for more than half of the weekends in a year. Full ADA compliance should be required for all short-term rentals. As part of the application process, a CASP report should be provided that shows that there are no barriers to accessibility. Previous violators of the short-term rental laws should be prohibited from obtaining a permit. It is good that ADUs are prohibited in the current regulation. And final comment, there's no putting the cap back in the bag. The time is now to make the most restrictive restrictions on short-term rentals.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Wyatt.
Good evening. My name is Paul Wyatt, and I'm a resident of the city of Dana Point. I'm concerned that without significant revisions, the ordinance being reviewed tonight will resolve in a residence referendum, and we'll be right back to where we were in 2016 and are today. In November 2016, the council rescinded the short-term rental ordinance. And that ordinance, as noted by the Coastal Commission in its letter dated April 1st, 2022, was substantially similar to the ordinance being reviewed tonight. By the summer of 2016, it was evident that the advent of Airbnb-type platforms and had changed the nature of a number of short-term rental bookings, enough so that the residents became concerned and and passed a referendum to overturn that ordinance. The draft ordinance being discussed tonight does not address these concerns. The minimum stay remains at two nights. The parties and events prohibition in that ordinance has been deleted and replaced by an arbitrary maximum of 20 persons, which the Coastal Commission has challenged in their letter back. And the client type was addressed by putting a minimum age of 25, which the Coastal Commission has challenged in their letter back and is almost likely going to be seen as age discrimination. Further, the Coastal Commission suggests that the business rules be included and as part of the ordinance, because if the business rules change, it could affect the number of permits out, and they don't want the city to be able to change the business rules. They want to control those rules. At its October 1st, 2019 meeting, the city council, when they formed this subcommittee, set three short-term rental objectives. One, maintain the character of our neighborhoods by not encouraging absentee corporate investment. Two, firmly protect against nuisances. And three, balance the rights and responsibilities of all residents and homeowners and honor all HOA regulations. The draft ordinance reviewed tonight does not restrict absentee corporate investment. Although the penalties have been increased, removing the event restriction increases the likelihood of nuisances. And the Coastal Commission, quote, urges, unquote, the city to find a way to overcome HOA regulations, stating that since, quote, "outsized portion," quote, close quote, of the residents, 42% reside in HOAs, and this is a, quote, "inherent obstacle obstacle to providing equitable public access and recreational opportunities along the coast," close quote. At the time, when the city struggles to provide workforce housing and the state of California, through its regional housing needs assessment, is requiring Dana Point to add 530 additional housing units, 231 very-low and low-income, and 299 moderate and above-moderate, 185 units are being diverted to STR use. And further, the Coastal Commission has suggested that ADUs can be used as part of homestay ordinances, which would revert very-low-income ADUs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Deanna Slocum.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for all the work you're doing to create a workable short-term rental ordinance for Dana Point. I'm a short-term rental owner of one home in Dana Point. It was my primary residence where I established excellent relationships with my neighbors, who are largely still there. I regularly check in with those neighbors to ensure my guests, who never stay shorter than seven days, are not impacting the wonderful, quiet nature of my neighborhood. The work that you are all doing to date reflects the intense research of city staff, and I appreciate and applaud where we are today. Last Wednesday, a few of us short-term rental owners were given notice of this meeting. I canceled my previously scheduled work meeting at 7:00 PM tonight to be here, but many could not. So, and many did not get the notification. So I would ask that, in first case, if we could send notifications of meetings to the current permit holders, who do pay TOT, who support the city in many different ways, that would be awesome. In addressing the content of the draft program, I'm focusing my comments on the category of non-primary residents, where the current proposal appears to increase the number of those units to 184, and there appears to be a cap on one rental per owner. One comment I have made throughout this process, which again has been amazing, is that to truly preserve the residential nature of our neighborhoods, we should look at density. Caps are fine, but density is more important. I don't want my neighbors to have three short-term rentals in one street. I would rather them have just one very quietly managed, longer-term, short-term rental. If we look at density, then any growth in the program can be controlled, and the neighborhoods would be left at their, with their peaceful, peaceful coexistence. I, for one, do not buy the housing stock shortage argument, because those of us who own short-term rentals probably own buildings or units or homes, in my case, that are worth well over $1 million to $2 million. This is not going to be an affordable house when it does become available if it's not a short-term rental. So the housing stock shortage and short-term rentals, to me, is not, is a nonsensical argument. My second issue concerns the number of short-term rentals per owner. I do take note that 73% of the current short-term rentals are owned by one owner, which, by the by, flies in the face of all the short-term rental opponents who indicate that we're all investors and stamping up properties. That being said, when we're expanding the program, those of us who have proven track records on operating short-term rentals that are responsible and are respectful for our community and taking into consideration the density issue that I just mentioned, it would be ideal if we would allow the current owners to augment and have another permit in addition to the one that they currently have. So increase the program for current permit holders to two to three units as opposed to just one. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Tony Nelson.
Good evening. Tony Nelson, Capistrano Beach. Despite all the window dressing of all the meetings, I'm not sure you've heard residents at all. This ordinance clearly favors investors over residents. You've got to see that. It also favors HOAs over non-HOAs and newer districts over older ones like Capo and Lantern District. While you profess to be protecting the city's affordable rental stock and balancing private property rights, you've done nothing of the sort. As you know, affordable rental stock in Dana Point is at an all-time low. Tiny studios are renting at $2,503,000 per month. Today, we have only 17 rental units available in Dana Point, as of today. They range in rates from $2,000 to $8,000 per month, and the $2,000 one is only 650 square feet. Now you're going to encourage at least 70 more investors, plus all the illegal ones, which you know will arise, to convert scarce, long-term units into much more lucrative, short-term rentals. Worse, you've redefined homestays, unbelievably, to allow one unit in every multi-unit building. Do you realize there are 5,000 of them in Dana Point? And you have no cap? What the heck? It's crazy. This is a huge win for investors, who would be thrilled with this ordinance. They can buy up all the duplexes and just do it. Those of us who bought homes in neighborhoods zoned residential now have to worry that that everything can change at the whim of an investor, and we have no right of protest. Think about that. We have no rights. If you think having an STR next door doesn't affect your property value, you are mistaken. Very few buyers would knowingly choose to live next door to an STR. You are giving us no choice and no compensation for the loss in our property value and the quality of our life. It's very unfair. 71% of STRs are located in Capo Beach and Lantern District, which has a 34% minority population. How fair is it that these two districts bear three-quarters of the city's burden simply because they're older areas established before we knew about HOAs? This ordinance offers full protection to residents of HOAs, but throws the rest of us under the bus. We just don't matter. If you actually believe there are many people who would prefer to live next door to a steady flow of tourists, why not grant us the right to say yes or no? Surely, there'd be lots of yeses. Or better still, why not give residents the right to vote on this fundamental change to our zoning? Or did the 4,000 people who signed the referendum simply not matter? It saddens me that this ordinance protects investors but does nothing to protect ordinary residents. We've just been left out. An STR in a residential area is a nuisance by its nature. Many hotels, no matter how well-run, are simply incompatible uses next door to single-family homes. Two-day transient tourists will never be neighbors, no matter how much you try. The CCC approved the Laguna Beach ordinance protecting both rental stock and residential neighborhoods. Why can't Dana Point do the same? Why don't we matter? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Betty Hill.
Thank you. Betty Hill, Capo, Capo Beach resident. It would be very easy for the city council to put the STR plan to a public vote. Within just weeks in 2016, the city council put Measure I on the ballot to try but fail to defeat the resident's Measure H. I believe that the council and the Planning Commission know that this plan would never be approved by a majority of Dana Point's residents, and that's sad. The definitions given in this plan for various types of STRs will essentially allow unlimited STRs in our residential neighborhoods. This proposal appears to contain a wish list for STR and real estate interests, including out-of-town investors. Other approaches are possible. In Santa Monica, even today, home sharing is permitted in primary residences where the host is present throughout the guest's day. Vacation rentals for less than 30 days are not allowed in any residential property. Also, the Coastal Commission has approved modifications to Laguna Beach's STR ordinance that also sort of establishes a prohibition in residential neighborhoods. The Planning Commission's public meetings resulted in a long list of regulations and ways to have exceptions approved. The regulations will be difficult and costly to enforce, and the fines are vague and toothless. Why isn't Airbnb required to provide the TOT as in other cities? Certain districts and people who are not protected by a homeowners' association, where they are prohibited, will bear the brunt of this policy. Statistics already bear that out, and even the EIR cites this problem. This policy will have a negative effect on affordable housing and result in discrimination against our minority population and other workers wanting to live in Dana Point. This plan is outdated and does not reflect the current negative impacts and costs of having an increasing number of STRs in our residential neighborhoods. Dana Point can and must do better for its residents. For example, the California Coastal Commission allows cities to put limits on the number of STRs in various parts of the city. Trying to pass additional requirements or penalties to offset problems will be met with fierce resistance and even lawsuits from the same groups that are supporting this policy today. This policy changes long-established zoning code protections and will affect the salability and value of neighborhood homes. The proximity of STRs should require disclosure. Will our communities suffer when strangers and outside investors inundate our neighborhoods? It undoubtedly will. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think that is all the speakers that I have. Do we have any additional speakers that... Anybody else wishing to speak? All right. Bring it back to the commission here for discussion, comments, and direction. Anybody want to start off? Ash?
All right. I, I have some comments. I would go to Supporting Document Draft STR Program, page 2, under item, sub-item L, which starts with transient means any person. Going to the fourth line below that is the word operator. And I feel that the word operator should be defined, because agent is defined in paragraph 5. And how's the definition of agent and operator different? So for that reason, I feel there needs to be a definition of the operator. And in the same line, after the operator and the occupant providing, does the occupant here means transient? It's not clear. That should be clarified, is all I'm saying. So, moving on to paragraph 3, sub-item C, it says, "New short-term rental permits shall be limited to one permit per owner for non-primary and homestay short rentals." The question I have is, does this mean a person can rent a non-primary and homestay under one permit? That that needs to be clarified.
John, did you get that question?
Yes, I believe that I understand the intent of the question. Do you want to respond?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Oh, um, yes, I I see, I see your question related to that and to clearly differentiate the two and that they're both held to the same permit limit of one.
Right, essentially, this is saying you have either-or, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Moving on to item 9, it starts by, second paragraph, "Permits that are inactive during the permit year will have their permit revoked." And then the last line says, "In no event shall a permit remain inactive for more..." I guess the next word should be more than two permits years collectively. So I I guess the inactivity is if the property is under renovation. And if the property is not under renovation, it's one year, otherwise it's two years. Correct?
Yeah, this specific item, the way it got crafted, the way that it's worded, is because we do permit years. And so it's not, the permit is valid for one year, and it's this very specific period of time, and they're same time every year. So, and restricting it to, we originally had it as one year, and it still is one year, but it's two permit years.
Right.
Because that one, that, let's say, that first year, that house is under remodel, then that's one permit year that they get a pass. They can't get another pass, basically.
Got it.
That, good way to describe it.
We can certainly play the language to make it a little more clear.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, then, moving on. I guess majority of these conditions of permit issuance and renewal have been taken from the code section, correct? The 5.38.
Yes.
So 5.38 also talks about this 25 years of age or older. It's in section 5.38, and I guess it was maintained the same because we don't want to overrule the code. But as brought out in the public hearing discussion, I think this may require revisiting. That was one of my comments earlier on. Then I guess under item twelve on page five is the, "The maximum daytime occupancy shall be limited to two and a half times the overnight occupancy and not exceed twenty persons." I personally feel twenty persons is a little too much. This is a technical question under paragraph eleven, subitem D1, "Limited to renting their home a maximum of sixty days a year," and so forth. So my question here is, what if the HOA limit's at to thirty days? What controls HOA or the city policy?
Well, I mean, at this point, I think we've been clear that we're not going to step in front of HOAs and overrule them in any regard. We don't, we've never taken that position.
So maybe we can add something to the wording here that stays unless restricted by HOA And the next one is not a comment but a question, and this is under twelve B, item one and two, under penalties. It just says, "Per state law is," what is the current dollar amount per state law? Do we know?
The current dollar amount is a five thousand maximum.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the comments I have on the draft.
Great, thank you. Appreciate those. They're all very good comments. Commissioner Gabbard?
I just want to go back to some of the comments that members of the public had and get staff's input. So if we looked at the Laguna Beach model and limited this to just multifamily and commercial zones, what effect would that have on whether it's Capo Beach or Beach, or Capo or Beach Road, or, you know, the Lantern District? What impact would it have?
So Laguna Beach, what they were approved to do with their LCP was to basically grandfather all existing short-term rentals located throughout the city. So it allowed them to maintain the short-term rentals in residential zones. But moving forward, they'd only allow new short-term rentals in mixed-use or commercial zones. How that would be applied to our city is similarly, all existing permits would be grandfathered, and any new permits would be permitted in our mixed-use zones, because we don't have residential uses in our commercial zones. So that would be limited to Town Center and Doherty Village.
Thank you. On the ten PM to seven AM occupancy, my understanding that was strictly for enforcement purposes so that if we ran into a problem and the homeowner wasn't there, that we could use that as leverage to revoke the permit. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a reason why we don't do ADA compliance for the units?
ADA is not required for private residences, and if we were to do that, that would put a huge burden on property owners throughout the city, as well as city staff to regulate that type of improvement.
Okay. On the one eighty-five cap, how was, what was the methodology used?
So we're, based on input from the Coastal Commission, we were trying to reflect what the demand was when the program was first established in 2016, I believe, and the numbers at that time are one hundred and eighty-five permits.
Okay. So I did a quick math on the number of households in Dana Point. It's sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty, roughly. So that's about one permit for every eighty-nine homes. So is that the right number, or should it be one per fifty?
What is the proper number, I really couldn't tell you. I mean, every jurisdiction is different. If you look at the city Newport Beach, for instance, they have sixteen hundred short-term rentals. So what is appropriate for one city may not be appropriate for another. I don't know the exact number for Laguna Beach, but it's very high as well. So I think in our instance, based on the fact that the one hundred and eighty-five reflects the number of permits that were used at a time that we did not have any limit on them, that does reflect our, the demand of our community.
Okay. On permit density, is there a prohibition on how many permits we can have in a geographic area?
There is not. I know the Subcommittee did discuss that a little bit, and the difficulty is you have communities like Beach Road, Corniche, Lantern Village, so it was difficult to come up with a formula that made sense.
If this went to a referendum and the city, you know, the citizens of the city voted this down, what would happen? We just, we'd still have status quo, and we'd still be struggling with this and trying to get it through.
Yeah, effectively, this would go back to the situation that I was discussing before. We'd be Manhattan Beach and Santa Barbara, and at least according to the Coastal Commission and the two most recent cases on the issue, effectively, we would have to allow short-term rentals as a residential use in all residential zones. We would not have restrictions on them. If we could also point out that the process that we are undertaking is a coastal development permit, a very different process than what an ordinance would allow for.
And then just two more. One, TOT collection on primary short-term rentals and homestays. Are we doing well with that? Are we not doing well with it?
That's a good question. I think Jeff Rosler can share with you, perhaps, our new program of how we're collecting TOT.
So TOT has always been handed over to both our department and the accounting department. And it's simply a paper and a check that comes into the city quarterly. Starting this quarter, we've moved to an online system. We've heard it discussed that, you know, we should have Airbnb or VRBO collect our TOT for us. We talked to a couple of different municipalities, jurisdictions, and their concern with that or their problem with that, those who have enacted and done so, they just simply get a check, one single check written from those platforms to them. And there's no accounting, there's no understanding of where, what homes, who did what. The platform that we've decided to go to, MuniRev, excuse me, GovOS, will not only allow us to track for each of our permit holders, the number of nights, number of days, TOT collected, and it'll be moved to a much more online and modern system.
Okay. And then lastly, I have to agree with Commissioner Dingar that twenty seems to be a lot for, you know, guests for a, for a home. I hope that we could revisit that, maybe I would even be in favor of cutting it at half. I think it would cut down on a lot of problems. So that's, you know, I, I have to tell you that this is a struggle for everybody up here. It's not an easy, it's not an easy topic, you know? We're balancing, you know, people's property rights with, you know, the character of our community, and it's a struggle. And I know that there's a lot of differing opinions on which way we should go on this, but just, I hope that everybody has some understanding that we're struggling with this as much as you are, and we're just trying to do the best that we can. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Great, thanks, Commissioner Gabbard. Commissioner Opel.
Thank you. I appreciate the public comments tonight. There were some good comments out there, some good comparisons to other cities, so some things I want to follow up on that I don't know the answers to, so thankful for that. I caught a couple of the same things that Commissioner Dingra did, so appreciate that. And you caught a lot of the comments for everybody, I think, so just a lot to go through and think about to make a decision at a later date.
So you, no other comments or questions? Okay, great. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I'll echo the comments that Commissioner Gabbard just stated, that this has not been an easy process. We have had online meetings over the last couple of years with operators, community groups, stakeholders, and management companies, trying to understand what the issues are. And some of the, some of the items that have been brought up, and we have people that look at the age limit and say twenty-five seems like that's a possible problem. You can't rent a car unless you're twenty-five years old. So there's certain precedents that we tried to look at, so if that's a, if that's a problem, that will have to be dealt with legally. The balance between property rights and quiet enjoyment to maintain the quality of the community versus the owner's right. So when someone says, "I have a disturbance next door, it's keeping me up," the city has an obligation to make sure that doesn't happen. And that's why we're talking the fines that we're talking about and that we have an enforcement group, and their job is to make sure that we maintain that. And if we don't, we'll have to make some changes. So this is the first cut, and we're trying to get it right. The second thing that, when we talk about the owner's rights, when mom and dad have to go to a home and the kids are faced with supporting them, there's a possibility that they're saying, "Hey, a short-term rental gives me to use mom and dad's house as an economic opportunity to support them." So it's not necessarily all corporations that are trying to maximize the income through our neighborhood. So trying to get that balance right is another issue that we're trying to consider. The, some of the things when the Coastal Commission says we should consider ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units, so if someone converts their garage to housing for their kids because it's really expensive to live in Dana Point, as the property values have increased dramatically, so we look at that and say, you shouldn't be able to use an ADU for a short-term rental because that, the whole purpose of an ADU is to provide affordable housing. And short-term rentals may be affordable housing, but not on Beach Row. And when we talk about twenty as a maximum, if you have one-bedroom house or a two-bedroom house, twenty is a lot. If you have an eight-bedroom house, twenty isn't a lot. So I think we have to consider there's a wide range of properties that are operating as short-term rentals. We also had issues where people say it's unfair that HOAs have some opportunity to limit and the rest of the community doesn't. HOAs have CCNRs that were established long before short-term rentals came out, and people that live in HOAs pay for their streets to be paved, their traffic, their lighting, their landscaping, the, all the costs of managing a property. So it isn't, it isn't a free ride for the HOAs if they're trying to honor the HOAs. And the City Council gave specific direction to our Subcommittee to maintain the legality of CCNRs. So with that, I'll turn it back to Chairman.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, first, I want to thank everybody who came out tonight. I saw some faces that we saw during the outreach meetings, which we did online, and it's really great to see everybody coming together again to continue to provide us feedback and give us, you know, some direction. This is the first time the whole Commission's seen this, and Commissioner Gabbard and Ash has brought up really good stuff. I heard some stuff tonight that I don't think we considered, and the list is, I think, worthy of going back through. So I don't know the right move here. My thought would be, we've received these comments, it would probably be a good idea to take those in, have the Subcommittee get back together and look at all the, I mean, I've got my list of, you know, from everybody who spoke, and go through these and make sure that, A, we understand them, and, you know, to the extent that we, as a Subcommittee, agree that we make changes, we do. I think there's some suggestions in here about the twenty-person limit that, you know, I'd never considered it at the level that I've heard it tonight, so I think it's worth talking about. There are other things that I, why I think are worth talking about, I don't think I'm willing to budge on. You know, I know that the Coastal Commission has let her ask for a lot of stuff, stuff I'm not comfortable providing, and I think, you know, we do have an obligation as a Commission to come up with the very best under circumstances where we have, you know, what I would say is, you know, people rowing oars in all different directions, is we have people tonight that think this is a great idea, we have people who think the neighborhoods are going to be destroyed. And so how do we find middle ground when you have people looking at it, either it's going to be bad or good? And I, I think planning for the future is hard. Planning for the future and codifying it is even harder, and so I think we have to be really careful how we do this. So my suggestion again would be bring all these comments back to the Subcommittee, let's go back through, deep dive on a couple of these things, and then bring it back again for another look and make sure everybody's comfortable before we move forward. Is that, I don't know if we need a motion on that because we're at a workshop, but...
Nope, your direction is fine.
Okay. You good with that? As a co-chair.
I totally support that. I think we need to include the entire Planning Commission in the next round and then come back after we've had a chance to do that.
Okay, so we, but we can't do, so our Subcommittee will have to meet without the rest of the, right? And then we bring that back here, go through the changes, the comments, you know, the stuff we heard, and then, you know, from there, we determine the next step. Yep. All right.
And we'll continue to keep the public apprised, too, of upcoming meetings.
Yeah, there was one comment about permit holders maybe not getting noticed. It's just, I think it's important to make sure everybody that's participated and given us their info, we make sure that they've been contacted. Great. All right, with that, thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff, for your time, and this will, to be continued. All right, that moves us on to new business to be, I don't believe we have any new business? No new business? Staff reports. Commissioner comments.
No, thanks to the Subcommittee for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. It's a complicated issue, so we appreciate it.
All right, thank you. No? I have no comments. All right. We're good? You have any comments?
I just want to say that the Subcommittee and staff did an excellent job of drafting and getting it to the stage that we are at today. And I want to thank, thank you and the Vice Chair.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
And the staff, of course, yes.
Doing the hard work. All right. With that, we will adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be held on April twenty-fifth, 2022, beginning at six PM or soon thereafter, here in the City Council Chambers, thirty-three, two, eight, two, Golden Lantern, Dana Point.